Hi.
Okay, Chair, we're live.
Good morning. Welcome to the December 22 planning board meeting. We are meeting virtually today. I have one note from the Montgomery Sentinel Sentinel in 1932. If you haven't gotten your Christmas gift yet, you could talk for one minute to Boston for the price of $1 per minute. That would mean $32 a minute in today's dollars. But, you know, the gift store is still open. You can still do that. I just want to let everybody know that our first work session on the Rustic Roads will be January 5. If commissioners have any questions for the participants at the at the work session and want to provide those in writing, we'll do that. We'll invite all of the participants to be to attend the meeting virtually or live. Just wanted to say that. We have all board members now. Roberto Panera, Cherie Branson, Amy Presley, and David Hill are all with us now and will proceed with our preliminary matters. We have the adoption of resolutions. We have three. No, we have a whole bunch of resolutions. We have six resolutions. And I think
Actually, you have eight. You have eight resolutions. The first one, the East-West Highway, that one Commissioner Panera was absent, so we'll need a motion on that one for which Commissioner Panero does not participate or abstains.
Okay, the first one being 4405 East-West Highway? I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for the resolution for 4405 East-West Highway Sketch Plan.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Panera must have seen. Yes.
You're muted.
I abstain.
You almost abstained in silence.
Yes.
All right. Now, where do you have a corrective resolution?
So for the remainder, Catherine, if you could put up the 1910 University Boulevard Preliminary Plan Proposed Resolution and scroll down to the bottom of the page for me. I know it's not showing in red, but you can see the red mark to the left. We had accidentally omitted Vice Chair Presley and from the resolution. We apologize for that. And so with that one edit to the resolutions, you can now move the remaining resolutions and everyone was present for those cases.
All right, we have the Chalbert Solar Site Plan. We have SRA 28,000 Grand Park Development. We have 1910 University Boulevard Preliminary Plan. We have 4901 Battery Lane Preliminary Plan. We have 4901 Battery Lane Site Plan. We have 4910 to 4920 Strathmore Lane Preliminary Plan, and we have 4910 to 4920 Strathmore Avenue Site Plan. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Anybody opposed saying no? Okay, good. We have approval of minutes from December 8. Just the closed session minutes or both minutes are there?
Both minutes are there.
Right, okay.
I was not present for that, so I will abstain when we.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I hope we approve the meetings for. Go ahead.
I move approval for the minutes of December 8.
In the closed session?
At the open and the closed session.
Second. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you very much. We're on to record plots. We have a Country Club Village. We have Mount Prospect Farm. We have Montgomery Community College Campus. Does staff have anything to say on these record plots?
Stephen Smith here from IRC. Just, we do not have anything to say other than we recommend approval as in the staff memo.
Okay, and there's no one signed up to testify, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve all three record plots.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the record plots that you enumerated.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, abstains? No this time. Okay, great. And Cherie, you are wearing the red that I would have liked to have worn if I could have gotten to my closet, but that's another long story.
Yeah, well, this is the pre. This is the holiday red. I thought I'd throw it on.
This is as close to the holiday as we're going to get, so it's a good day to wear it. All right. Now we have regulatory extensions. We have Batson Road Property Administrative Subdivision, Turgoni Property Pre-Preliminary Plan. We have, and just those two. You know, these are being requested by the applicant. It's hard to deny them when we have those requests, but I'll entertain a motion.
I would just comment that I looked through these and Commissioner Hill said before, it's kind of distressing when they keep happening, but in both cases, there are things related to technical requirements that could have been met, so I will move approval.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 So that's all done. Nobody's opposed. I think we're ready to go to the forest conservation item.
Is this a separate?
Is that a separate meeting?
Correct. So log off and log back on.
Hi. We are now live.
Good morning. Welcome to the December 22 virtual meeting of the Planning Board. We are on Item 4 Forest Conservation Plan Amendment for Kentstale Estate. I will turn it over to staff to tell us what's going on.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Sorrento, Chief of the Intake and Regulatory Coordination Division. I wanted to step in here and just give a brief overview before turning it over to Stephen Peck, the inspector in this case. This is something new that you have not seen yet. This is an amendment in response to a forest conservation violation. And just to give you some background on what we do when we look at these, we, our goal is always to achieve compliance when there is a forest conservation violation. And sometimes achieving compliance is also, sorry, we're getting some feedback over here. Sometimes achieving compliance means taking a forest conservation amendment to the board and having mitigation that meets the policies that the board has set and the forest conservation law. That is what you see before you today. Other times, many times, we're able to just achieve compliance in the field where folks, you know, replant an area that they've disturbed or something like that. And then other times, as Vice Chair Presley is aware, we can't come to a solution and then we need to bring them to you as a violation hearing. This is not a violation hearing. This is a situation where we have, you know, met with the applicant and have come up with mitigation that we believe is appropriate in this case. However, the planning board is the ultimate, you know, you have the ultimate power to determine what is appropriate and what is not. Just know that when we bring things to you, that they are in compliance, at the very least, at the minimum with the planning board's past practices and the policy that has been put in place. So with that, I will turn it over to Stephen Peck and he can present this case.
For the record, Stephen Peck, Senior Forest Conservation Inspector, Intake and Regulatory Coordination. I'm presenting the staff presentation for the Forest Conservation Plan Amendment. The, this is an amendment proposing conservation easement changes. The conservation easements have been granted to the planning board. The forest conservation law regulations require changes to the easement to be reviewed by the planning board. The subject property is Kentstale Estates, Lot 44 and Parcel 495. The property is in Potomac. It's in the Cabin John Watershed. And this is a vicinity diagram on the screen. The address for the property is off of Willowbrook Drive, on Willowbrook Drive. This is a close-up image of the subject property with a 2021 aerial photo. The house lot, Lot 44, is in the center. There's a parcel on either side. It's a single parcel. It's Parcel 495. Again, the property is accessed from Willowbrook Drive as it ends coming north from Democracy. This amendment is proposing .20 acres of Category 1 Conservation Easement Release and establishing .20 acres of new forest conservation easement within the boundaries of the subject property. The map on the screen in red outlines four areas of proposed conservation easement release and three areas of new forest conservation retention. The areas in red equal the areas in green. There's an area in yellow over on the west side of Parcel 495. That area was recorded in easement in error. It's no longer owned by the applicant and it's proposed that that area be released. And that's 11 hundreds of an acre. To be super clear and not to belabor the issue, the property is located at 10423 Willowbrook Drive. There was an error in the agenda listing in a couple instances in the staff report where it was referred to as Lane. Willowbrook Lane does not exist in Potomac. All the posting and the noticings were done to the correct addresses. Staff is not, has heard from neighbors and provided additional information, but has not received any written responses since posting of the staff report or mailing of the notices. I have a few slides now for background. And I'll just highlight elements that relate to the Forest Conservation Amendment before you. In development, the first plan that's reviewed and approved is a natural resource inventory forest stand delineation where the natural features and existing improvements are identified, including forest stands, existing roads, existing easements. I would point out on this map, highlighting, circling with my mouse here, the cursor, areas that are the subject property. Stand A is, parts of that are now Parcel 495. Stand B, parts of Lot 44 and Parcel 495. I also highlight that Willowbrook Drive, at the time when this was reviewed and approved, which is, you know, the mid 90s, it was a paper street. It was a paper street. It was a street that was possibly going to be extended. And it's sort of bisected what now is Lot, Parcel 495. This is just an image that, and just for background knowledge, that the planning board approved the subdivision, which the subject property is part of, Kentstale Estates, in May of 1997. And it was intended, it was approved for seven lots. One of those lots is Lot 44. Before you is an image and you might need to all sort of flip. It's upside down on purpose just to show you that this is the Forest Conservation Plan that's being amended. I wanted to make sure the projection was north. The consultant here decided to have the projection facing south. Very confusing, but just know that the house lot is in the center and this is the plan that established the forest retention areas, the conservation easements. And that's reflected in this map where it outlined the areas to be disturbed and the areas to be retained. The easements get created after the plan was approved back in 2006. The conservation easements are established according to that plan. And for the buildable lot, for Lot 44 were the houses, that was a record plat. It included abandonment of the Willowbrook, part of the Willowbrook Drive. That was already, it already had happened. So then there became this Parcel 495, which is like a wing-shaped parcel. The Parcel 495 easement was recorded by deed, and this is a copy of the deed that's in land records. These easements were granted to the Montgomery County Planning Board. This is an amendment for these easements that were created. Fast forward to 2020, there's a concern about activities happening in the property that might be violations of the easement. Inspector went to the property and discovered some violations, issued enforcement action. The fines were paid for those. The violations included building a man-made waterfall and part of a forest save area, turning a forest save area into of a lawn area, entrenching an electrical wire. Through the process of discussing the violation, the applicant's given the opportunity to submit an amendment. And so the amendment has been submitted. And the amendment proposes to resolve the violations. Oh, sorry, I can't see this. Sorry, I apologize. I can't see the screen when a hand's raised. Commissioner Presley?
Yes, I just had a question on that. You mentioned that the fines have already been paid. Can you just briefly tell us how the fines were determined in this case and what the penalty was?
The, the fines were, well, the citations were one for unauthorized cutting and clearing of the two areas. And the other citation was issued for putting in improvements. The areas in red where there's a driveway was built into existing conservation easement, the waterfall. And the other.
No, I understood those.
Okay.
I was just, I was just asking the monetary fine. Was there a monetary fine?
Yeah, so the max fine that's allowed per violation is $1,000. So there were two citations issued totaling $2,000.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Yes. What Stephen Peck is talking about is the fines that they give out in the citations, not administrative civil penalties that are assessed when something goes through a whole violation hearing. Since this is not going through a whole violation hearing, it does not have a penalty assessed.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you very much.
Commissioner? Is there another question?
Yes, I have kind of a, you know, as a new commissioner, I have very basic question that maybe you can answer, which is I'm kind of interested to know how these type of violations come about. Is it, if you can just briefly tell me, you know, how many inspectors you have? Do you just simply go around looking at these properties and then come up? Or is it neighbors that call in and say, you know, we've noticed that, I don't know, they're cutting down trees or can you look into it? I'm just curious about, you know, how many inspections you do, how many inspectors you have, and how does this kind of thing comes about?
Yeah, sure. I can, I can answer that question. There are four inspectors for Montgomery County. There are over 3,000 acres of conservation easement. And at any one time, in each inspector, each inspector has like a geographical area. We are largely a reactive team, given the fact that we have to inspect conservation easements on like a three-year rotating basis. And so oftentimes we get called out to a site in response to like a neighbor concern or a concern. And so in part, but I can tell you on this site, I've been the inspector for this site for the last 14 years, and there's been other violations on this site that got cleaned up. They, it's a very large house in this site, and when it was approved, staff has found that there can be inherent conflicts with forest save areas put close to houses. And in previous instance, a dry well was built into a conservation easement and the inspection team got them to take that out. So yes, I think that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Ms. Branson, Commissioner Branson? You're muted. Okay.
Thank you. So I don't, I don't know if you, I don't know if you want to answer these questions. When you finish your presentation, it might be best, but, but I sort of had two questions. One is, didn't they need a permit for this stuff? And if they did, you know, because it seems like there was some electrical and, you know, other things, other construction-type things that it's, that I would, I would assume you would need a permit for. And if so, how did, how did that get approved since, you know, I'm assuming that there is an interaction between permitting services and planning, especially when it comes to these conservation easements. That's number one. And number two, I thought the staff memo, I wasn't real clear on which part of the parcel was subject to an adverse possession. Action, lawsuit?
Part in yellow.
Pardon? Yeah, okay. So who was adversely possessing it?
To answer the first. To answer the.
Go right ahead.
To answer the first question, regarding the areas near the house where there were conservation easements, encroachments, the electrical wires and the cut and fill and putting in the waterfall are all, any permits that might be required would be not through the Montgomery County Planning Department. So we wouldn't see that. So I wouldn't, it would be whether it triggers sediment control permit, whether the waterfall would have triggered a sediment control permit revision. I don't know. And regarding the second question, I mean, that's the area that's in crosshatching in a yellow. That's an area that's no longer part of the property and like the court has made an order. So an order is part of, it's one of the attachments. And the, part of the amendment that's coming in, it's so, it takes so long to come into an amendment. You saw when the violation was in 2020, the processes to get plans reviewed and back and forth. What you want to do when you, when an applicant comes in for an amendment like this, you just want to clean up any kind of forest conservation issue. The part for the adverse possession is not the fact that it happened. It happened. It's done. It's about, well, before that court made that order, it was, there was an error in declaring that area in yellow as a forest save area. And it's never been. It's been, it's been the neighbors. And so in 2018 or 2019, I don't remember the exact date, the court made the order for the adverse possession. So it's, this is cleaning that up, recognizing that it's never been forest. It's not part of the subject property. And the proposal there is to. And the proposal there is to, to release it, but adjust, adjust the forest conservation plan because the tract area is smaller. So parcel 495 is smaller now than it was before the court order, and that results in additional planting that the applicant will, is proposed. Satisfying the fee and lieu.
Okay, no, I understand that here, no, I understand the part about you all didn't do the permit. What I, what I'm asking is that there is, in fact, in Montgomery County, a Department of Permitting Services. And, and I'm trying to understand the interaction, if any, between the Department of Permitting Services and the Planning Board. You know, I, people have to go to permitting services to get permits to do stuff. And so, it would seem to me, because of the electrical and, and a number, this whole, that whole, uh, water feature, which was lovely, but I assume that that had to be permitted. And so, so my question is really want to process, you know, and maybe, you know, somebody else. But, so, when the, when the property owner sought a permit, is there, does the Department of Permitting Services look at the, to look to determine whether or not the property is under some sort of conservation easement? You know, is there, you know, is there interaction between, and what kind of interaction is there between these two parts of government? Because, you know, if, well, let's just start.
Let them answer the question.
Yeah, let's just start there.
There isn't, there is good interactions with our agency and Department of Permitting Services. We work together on a daily basis. Oftentimes, things slip through the cracks where it's on the applicant to, you know, apply for the right permits. And I, not in a position to know what permits are required for electrical, but would know if it was sediment control, and so.
Commissioner Branson, this is Josh Kay, Inspection Supervisor, for the record. Typically, these types of improvements do not require building permits, in my experience. So I'm sure in this situation, a building permit was not required. If a building permit was required.
Okay.
The zoning inspector or reviewer would actually recognize a conservation easement would be in this area and probably not approve the permit.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, because, you know, I'm just wondering if there was a, I'm, I was really wondering whether this, this occurrence could have been avoided if, you know, there had been another, if another governmental entity had been involved, you know? And what you're telling me is that there was no governmental entity involved. This, this person was able to build this stuff without a permit. Is that, is that clear? Is that, is that accurate?
I believe that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Presley, you had something? You're muted.
Commissioner Branson asked my secondary question. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, the, the real routine is, is some construction permits, building permits, are different than a mere electrical permit. And here, you might have had just electrical permit and not building. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, if we're done with the staff presentation and hearing, are we?
Are we? I don't know. Are we done with the present?
I have a few more slides, perhaps I can get through, just to reiterate staff's recommendations on the item.
Yes, please go ahead.
So I've outlined here a few slides, the areas in red for the conservation easement encroachments near the house, the, the waterfall area on the south side, the parts of the driveway, slopes on the east side, a little driveway encroachment. I showed photos of the grassy areas, like in the area, conservation easement area here to the north. An explanation the applicant gave there is, we need to have an area for our kids to play. And sometimes when you're a young kid, it's hard to play in brambles and briars and forests. The applicant is proposed to have a level play area where they can have a space to have an area where the kids can play without, you know, getting into the, to the forest area. The areas in red, again, are all being mitigated onsite with new forest retention. It's like a reconfiguration. So the areas in green here show the areas where new forest is not protected right now is proposed to be added. So the areas that were in red, near the house and the driveway, .20 acres equals the areas in green, which is new forest retention, .20 acres. The restoration areas, parts of the area here to the north, restoration planting area A, the applicant removed the electrical wires after talking with the inspector, pulled them all out, it's leaf conditions. They're able to restore it to forest conditions by adding shrubs and understory trees. And the same for a large area, and here were restoration planting area B, where supplemental planning is being done to restore forest conditions. That's part of this amendment. It will be bonded, it'll be a five-year maintenance management agreement, which is standard for forest conservation plans. We discussed the area, the cleanup of this area recorded in error, where the tract area is now smaller because it's no longer part of the property, and that results in additional planning requirements that the applicant has agreed to do by paying fee and lieu, because the amount of planning is so small, they agreed to pay to satisfy the .07, 700ths of an acre with the fee and lieu payment. So in summary, onsite mitigation for the .20, .20 acres of reconfiguration, supplemental planning in the restoration areas between the house and the driveway, additional forest planning for the, the area of the property that's no longer part of the property, it's the neighbors. Also, a note that no stream buffer wetlands or floodplains are impacted. Also, no specimen trees are impacted by this amendment. The amendment will resolve the forest conservation law violation, implementing the amendment, if approved, will, will resolve the forest conservation violations on the property. And staff recommends approval of the amendment as presented today with the conditions in the staff report. That's the presentation for staff.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, at a very high level, I'm just, I've got two why questions, which is why do we have forest conservation items here? It seems like a residential property and very large, and perhaps plop down right in the middle of a forest stand that we were trying to preserve. And the second part is sort of, do we know why the owner just went ahead to proceed? Is this, you know, are they not the original people that got the easement, so they really weren't aware of it? Or was it inadvertent, or disregard, or just pause? And I appreciate both of those questions are not particularly staff knowledge, but what you know about it is what I'm looking for.
To answer your question, the applicant is the original owner of the property. They built the house. They were the applicant for the 2006 Forest Conservation Plan that's proposed to be amended And, yeah, there's a balance. When, when applicants come in proposing subdivision plans, there's a need both to protect forests and provide space to be able to use your property as intended, as a residential. And stuff happens. But I think that I would ask Dave McKee and the applicant maybe to also respond to your question.
Okay, let's get to that in a moment. And one more, one more question for you, which is, in terms of dissuading people from doing this again in the future, we have a punitive fine, and we really have the burden of the current process. But that's, and we'll have to inspect, follow up to make sure things are going well. But that's really our condition here, right?
Well, right, there's, there's tremendous follow-up after this amendment in terms of the bond that will have to be posted for the restoration planting, the maintenance management agreement that'll have to be signed, and the maintenance will have to be done for those restoration areas. The plan includes easement markers to, at the boundary of the conservation easements. The forest conservation plan for any property is part of the property, so it, their, the inspection team follows up.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Panera?
Thank you, Mr., where's it, Becker? Yeah, I, following up with what Commissioner Hill said, I'm, you know, my concern is, and I think you mentioned it, that this property owner, over the years, have had recurrent violations. This is not the first time. And I'm just wondering whether the penalty may not be enough, or whether there's, I mean, you just mentioned the bond, you mentioned, you know, the trouble that the homeowner has to go through, the property owner. Is there, in your opinion, I mean, you know, you can just, it doesn't have to be you, it could be planning director, whoever, is there anything else that we can do as a deterrent so that this property owner does not continue? And I'm not talking about just these property owners, I'm referring to other owners who may be in a kind of a same type of situation where maybe the fine, it's not a big deal for them, let's say. And anything else we could do?
Commissioner Panero, I, I would say the way that we handled this case was, we did our typical policy of one-to-one replacement on-site, and that's, that's kind of the minimum of what we require. So if the board wanted, you can always require more. That is one, that is one way of, of doing that, is, you know, you could ask for two-to-one, you can ask for off-site. There's, there's many different handles that you can pull.
Okay, all right. Well, we should talk about that, you know, in, in the board, on the board, to discuss about what the options are, alternatives. But I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, it, from what I heard Mr. Becker said, what was, you know, there's been issues with this property owner in particular. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes, they, I mean, it's clear on this case that the owner knew exactly what they were doing. They signed the plat records and everything, you know, for the property, so they know. And as you said, they've had violations before. So to bring some institutional memory back in front of everyone, these type of violations were occurring quite frequently and, and not as easily detected back in the day. And I'm talking about when Roy Sanson was still the chair. And there were two serious issues, and we had to, as a board, look at violations and how to, which is why I was asking the question at the beginning, what was, was there a fee paid? But one thing that we determined was that in some situations, the original plan, conservation plan that was placed on the property didn't allow for standard things that one would have, whether it's a large home, a small home. So the, the forest conservation area may have been so close to three sides of the house that they had children and they couldn't put in a slide in the backyard. So I know this was, this was approved like way back before I was on the board and, and we were starting to have these discussions. I'm sure staff takes into consideration what the alleged hardship might be. Now, we could look at this on the surface and say, look, you know, these folks have money, and do they just do what they want and then pay to play? That's, that's a serious question. But it would be the same of anyone. And as, as Ms. Sorrento said, we could impose an additional burden. I have to say, I was frankly surprised that it was a one-to-one ratio, that there wasn't something also off-site. But I just wanted to share with the rest of the commissioners, this is not a first time, but if you look at how close around the house, if, when you saw the areas of violation, those are, those are the types of things that were mistakes made in the past, that I think staff tries to ensure that there's enough room to live and use your property when they're approving things now.
Just a question for staff here, is this a violation we're dealing with, or just an amendment?
Just an amendment.
Just an amendment.
So if it's an amendment, can, can we impose more than one-to-one on, on the exchange of areas?
Yes, you, this is strictly within your purview. There, this is an amendment, but it's in response to a violation. And the easements on there are, are the commission's property interests. So when you, when you approve an amendment to remove those easements, you're approving, you know, removal of your property interest, so you have the ability to ask for other mitigation, if that's what you want to do.
So I'm curious as to whether, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear to me, whether the play area issue was resolved. Is there now going to be a play area on this property?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And they're moving that area that was under forest conservation to another area on the site?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, it was not, it was just not clear to me that the play area had been allowed. Okay.
It's a future play area.
Commissioner Hill?
Right.
It's, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody is aware, that's a future play area, there's nothing going on right that, now in that easement area, but they want to remove it for future play area.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, I guess, you know, I sort of, I, I understand protecting the, the commission's interest in this property, but I also understand that, you know, that, that the applicant's interests in, in trying to establish a play area are not unreasonable. And, and, you know, there has to sort of be, to me, a, a way to, to, to allow, you know, that interest anyway. I, so I just wanted to be sure that we were, we were doing that.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, this is for staff. If, if we decide here that we want a greater replacement, and I'm just going to throw up the number 1.5, what's practical on this site? I presume that's going to be replanting as opposed to saving more standing forests?
Again, as Christina Sorrento stated, that it's, the mitigation rate is, is up to the board. The board approved in 1997. You know, this subject property is part of Kent still Estates subdivision, approved by the board for seven lots. So initially intended to be residential, so these would be areas that, understanding, understanding that parcel 495 will have to come back likely to the Planning Board at a future time, if, if and when a property owner for that property would want to, to create a lot there because it meets the criteria. And so at that time, there would be like a subdivision plan amendment in forest conservation plan. And so additional forest retention on this site might be challenging. Ms. Sorrento?
So if the board wished to increase the mitigation, it would likely be off-site. I believe that Mr. Peck worked with them to preserve what was onsite. And so any, any additional would likely be an off-site replacement.
And that would be fee and lieu, correct? So that we would in a sense be increasing the penalty that's, that's made here?
Yes, it can be fee and lieu, it can be mitigation bank, but if, it can be fee and lieu for that amount.
Okay, and you mentioned that one of these parcels may be expanded, but neither of the wing parcels here have street frontage, so there's no possibility at the moment of putting another residence on them?
At the moment, no, but they could, a future property owner or this applicant could come forward in the future with a, with a subdivision plan or plan amendment to propose a. could come forward in the future with a subdivision plan or plan amendment to propose a residential lot there.
Okay, that probably would be off the driveway as an access easement to those properties, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
I don't see a way to expand, I don't see a way to expand the street here to get frontage to, to be able to develop those lots.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, please. I don't know who you are, but...
Yeah, thank you. Dave McKee, Benning and Associates. I prepared the plan that you're looking at, been working with Stephen to resolve these matters. So first, I'd just like to say that, that we concur with the staff report, there are A conditions, and we're ready to follow through with those conditions to meet the requirements and bring the property into compliance. I wanted to point out that there is about 3.35 acres of the property currently in easement that is existing forest, and we're talking about a violation altogether on the edges of 0.1 acre, a very small amount, given the overall amount of easement. So we bumped into the easement areas, as you can see, in those red areas, you know, minus the play area, which is an addition, there's no violation there, we only have about 0.1 acre. So I think that we have met and achieved what would be compliance by exchanging those areas for other areas of forest already on the property, quality forest, mature forest, that I think should be enough.
So if I, if I can just get a clarification, the play area is about 0.1 acres as well?
That's correct, yeah.
Right, so the total we're changing here is 0.2 acres?
0.2 acre, correct, yep.
Great, thank you. Ms. Presley?
I guess I just, you know, as this is unfolding, I wanted to ask staff, because I don't want to just be punitive in saying we should add any other penalty. It does look to me like the original plan did close in the home in a way that it would be hard not to bump into any of the edges. So was staff taking that into consideration, and is that sort of a supporting reason why this particular, you know, amendment to the plan is acceptable?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I understand that, thank you very much.
Would, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to move something.
Based on everything that we have heard, the staff's considerations and the situation, I do move approval.
I second it.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Presley.
I, I second it.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? I, I'd just like to say that, you know, just looking at the, the shape of the easements on the site, it looked like it was designed for trouble.
Yes.
You know, to be able to understand all of those small areas and to never have a violation and still live there, you know, we're setting up a problem a little bit. You know, we have to look for areas that are contiguous, not, not split up all over the place. I understand the forest is where the forest is, but, but this one looks a little challenging for the, for the owner, and I appreciate that, and I, thank you, the gentleman that spoke up for the applicant here. We have a motion on the floor in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, and I appreciate staff's tolerance for our questions, and I know they'll be tolerant in the future. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I just wondered, my staff work on this, I'm sure it was not easy, this is a gated property, discovering these, handling these, coming to the balance of replacing these, that's great work, thank you.
I agree.
I agree, I agree, thank you very much. All right, I think we have to go to our next Teams meeting for this, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we'll see you around the corner. Okay, we'll see you around the corner. Good morning. Welcome to item five of the December 22nd meeting of the Planning Board. This issue relates to a transfer of funds. Is planning going to go first or is parks going to go? Planning is going first. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Stern, who might turn it over to Ms. Warnock in two seconds, but we'll see.
Good morning Commissioners, Tanya Stern, Acting Planning Director. For the record, I will turn over this item to Karen Warnock for the presentation and discussion.
Good morning Board. My name is Karen Warnock. I'm the Management Services Chief for Montgomery Planning. Today, we're here seeking your approval to, for the budget transfer of $307,000 from Personnel Services to Other Services and Charges. The land use article provides for budget transfers as long as the transfer doesn't exceed 110% of the available budgeted amounts or result in a change in the work program. Accordingly, Commission Practice 360 on Budget Adjustments allows for budget transfers when they don't increase the budget more than 10% and when such transfers approved by the Planning Board when they exceed $100,000 in requests. The Planning Board has the authority to transfer appropriations between Personnel Service, Supply Services, Capital Outlay, and between divisions if they meet those conditions. The recommendations below do not exceed 10% in any division and do not change any of the work program. Each year during the budget, during, throughout the year, projections are performed generally at the end of January for five-month projections for the rest of the year and then at the end of March for three-month projections at the end of the year. These are performed with our assistance but by the Finance Department and the Secretary Treasurer then provides a report on those to the Planning Board. Generally, we do have some personnel savings due to lapse more than expected and, or more than budgeted rather, and so we do ask to have transfers done. This year, because of some procurement issues where it's hard, if we only know at the end of March, to try and procure items before the end of the year, it's hard to make those procurements happen sometimes. So that's why we're asking for them now in December because we have done, looked at our projections preliminarily and believe that we will have the funding to cover these transfers. If you don't have any other questions on the nature of transfers, I will go through like just the details of the transfers. So we have four.
I don't see any hands.
Great.
Oh wait, do Commissioner Panera.
Yes, I just have a very general question again, being a new Commissioner. I guess I don't have any problem with the transfers, but you know, I remember when we used to talk about serial-based budgets and then incremental budgets and all that. And I'm just wondering, the fact that you're transferring funds now, does that in any way affect, and you're transferring from personnel, does that affect what you're going to be requesting for next year? Thinking that many times budget, you know, you start from the base. You start from what you had, what you were budgeting for this year. And then when you do the budget for next year, are you going to start with $307,000 less than what you requested this year in your budget?
No, well actually, well, this money is already in our budget. We're just asking to move it from one spot to the other so it doesn't really impact FY24's budget request in that manner. These, some.
I was just also wanting to add, Commissioner Panera, we've already prepared our, we've already prepared our FY24 budget request. And so this request does not impact the dollar amount that we're requesting for FY24. There is one item on this project, excuse me, on this list of projects for which we are requesting this transfer, for which we have already included a request for FY24 funds because it will be an ongoing purchase that we will need to make. But to answer your question, no, it does not impact our FY24 budget request.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, my only concern is I know that there's vacancies on the, on the Planning Board, you know, for personnel and anybody who sees you, you know, who sees us making decisions about transferring funds. I'm sure that people are going to be wondering why you, you know, not able to. I know it has to do a lot with attrition and procurement and how fast you can move to, to hire staff. But I just don't want to give the wrong impression that we're cutting the budget for staffing.
No, we are not. No, not at all. And in fact, as we are working on these budget transfers and our FY24 budget requests, we are also very actively filling current vacancies. But, but given that we have had some laps between when, during a time when positions are vacant, that's how we know we will be able to have some savings that we would like to use for these other purposes.
And I'd like to welcome our Commissioners to the crazy world of budgeting where we already approved the FY24 budget yesterday from, from, going forward from the Commission. So we are almost, we're at least six months ahead of where we get to actually know something, but we have to submit budgets. And we did that already. And that will go to the Executive and he'll say something about that about March 15th. So we'll get more reviews of a budget as it goes forward, but we have to work way in advance of, of, of where the real world is. Ms. Warnock, if you'd continue.
Sure. So the four budget requests that we are asking, or budget transfers rather, that we're asking for this year. One of the initiatives was in the FY23 budget, but the work program, we required additional funding to achieve all the goals because the goals had changed a little bit since it was requested over a year ago. Three of the initiatives are funded as part of our ongoing work program but require additional funding to address situations that have come to light since the FY23 budget was prepared last fall. I'll go through each of the initiatives briefly. If you have any questions, we have staff available to answer more detailed questions if you have them. Our first request is for $75,000 to update incentive density implementation guidelines for commercial residential and employment zones. This is in our FY23 work program and $50,000 was included in the budget. However, since the beginning, the scope was refined. And when we put the RFP out, competitive bids, it came back with an additional $75,000 as needed to engage the consultant to perform all the needed tasks. For Montgomery Planning and the Planning Board website replatform, we're requesting $100,000 transfer. Both of the websites were updated last in 2016, so six years ago. And after the FY23 budget was submitted, our current vendor changed their business model to move away from website design and support. And our contract with them ends this June, this coming June, June 2023. And then in addition, we would also wish to achieve a higher level of ADA compliance. So it is time to replatform our website. To do this, we need 100,000. It's $30,000 for the Planning Board website, $70,000 for the Planning Department's website. And the Parks is also going to submit a request for their portion of the website replatform. The third item is for security information and event management, $75,000. As everyone knows, cybersecurity is in the news all over the place these days. And it's a critical component of our ITI's work program. This will allow staff to have a real-time view of all security activities moving inbound and outbound through our network. It provides security incident management through the collection of analysis, through collection and analysis. And it provides threat intelligence and extensive compliance reporting and forensic capabilities. The total cost is $150,000. We're asking for a 50-50 split with the Parks Department.
Commissioner Hill has something to say, excuse me.
Thank you.
Question, very quick question on that item. That here means security event, not park events?
I'm so sorry, yes. Did I say?
Yes.
My apologies.
No apology. I just wanted to clarify what event we were talking about.
Okay. The last item is for Adobe Creative Cloud licenses of $57,000. Many of our staff use Adobe Acrobat to manage PDFs. And these licenses are funded through the Commission-wide IT Fund. Some staff also use the Adobe Creative Cloud, which has multiple applications to do graphics and other image-based work. The Commission had a multi-year license for Adobe Cloud that was procured several years ago and that contract expired in October of 2022. And then both the renewal costs for the contract plus the number of licenses needed has increased significantly. CAS has procured a new multi-year contract for us that must be refunded, must be funded each year at renewal time. And for FY23, this funding is $57,000. And that request is also included in the FY24 proposed budget request for this amount. That concludes my presentation. If anybody has any questions.
Seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Planning Department budget transfers. I moved up, we approved the budget transfers.
We, we all want to get them their money.
Yeah.
We're all first thing and seconding the motion.
Ms. Branson, I think made the motion and Commissioner Hill seconded. How's that?
Sounds good.
Just to parse through the noise I heard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll go on to the Parks Department.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on just an item on this?
Sure.
Because the budgeting for this is, the first is coming to my awareness. But this is probably a comment for Director Stern, which is, I'm very interested in follow-up on the incentive density changes. I think that's almost always a sort of a hot-button issue with the public that, you know, because it borders on, someone can kind of buy into more property rights than other people. So I'm interested in hearing about that as that goes forward.
Certainly, and this project is part of our FY23 work program. And so the decision that you just made will help support our ability to complete the RFP so that we can actually get it started. So we will be coming back to the Board in the near, near future to talk about the scope as we get started on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Director Riley.
Good morning, Planning Board. I am going to quickly turn it over to our highly capable Budget Manager Nancy Steen to run you through the Parks request.
Good morning. For the record, Nancy Steen, Budget Manager for Montgomery Parks. And I am here also today requesting your approval for a budget adjustment for the Park Fund. As we've mentioned, there's, we've had quite a bit of staff attrition. It's a competitive job market. And so it has contributed to a record number of vacancies for our department. Our staff are actively working to fill all vacant positions. However, we are already projecting to have significant savings in personnel costs due to these vacancies. Therefore, we're coming to the Planning Board now to request to reallocate budgeted savings to utilize this available funding to meet departmental needs. I will briefly go through a summary of our request. Our memo does provide further detail. And some of that detail was also available from the planning request. Currently, we're requesting approval to transfer $1,988,786 of available personnel savings in the Park Fund to be used for non-personnel needs. Our first request is to reallocate $697,227 to purchase vehicles and equipment. This total includes just over 9,000 to purchase materials for new community gardens that will be opening soon. And this request also includes $538,158 to replace mowers and other equipment that is approaching the end of its useful life. The older equipment will be replaced with more energy-efficient electric equipment. And we're also requesting $150,000 to purchase an additional trash truck. I see you have a question from Commissioner Presley.
Yes, hi. Oh, good, I'm on. I just wanted to make sure, this is not going to negatively impact the budget and the ability to hire people on in the future. This is just transferring the excess, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to our next request, it's for $611,655 for various technology purchases. This total includes funding of $258,947 for several software licenses and a system upgrade. And then also included, this total is a request for $104,000 to purchase computers and other technology equipment. We're also requesting $150,000 to support a redesign of the Parks website, which Planning also mentioned. And then finally, we're requesting $88,708 to fund security upgrades at Brookside Gardens. Our department is requesting $587,199 for contractual services. That total does include $187,199 for temporary staff and contractors that we have hired to backfill duties that are associated with various vacant positions. In addition, we're requesting $400,000 in supplemental funding for the demolition needed to begin development of the planned South Silver Spring Urban Park. Finally, we're requesting $92,705 for repairs and maintenance to the production greenhouses at Brookside Gardens and also to reduce the backlog of needed repairs at playgrounds. And at this time, the Planning Board's approval of this transfer is requested.
You will notice that, that even to hire contracted temporary employees to replace salaries, we need to do a transfer because it goes from the category of salaries to contractor. So there's lots of reasons to do this and this will help the Parks Department perform their work program. This will forward our mission of providing a safe and well-maintained park system. I've been through a lot of this memo with this staff and I just congratulate them on, on doing some thorough work. Commissioner Branson.
Actually, actually, I think Commissioner Panero had his hand up first.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Panera.
Thank you, Commissioner Branson. I just was following up on what the Chair said, which is that these are contracts that, that we need to do because we're basically hiring staff, replacing some of the in-house staff that has left for whatever reason, retirement, attrition, new jobs. I'm always concerned when we talk about contracts, the time issue and whether we're just simply adding on to the, to an existing contract that we have for many of the services. Obviously, you know, within the existing annual budget, it would be hard to do RFPs, bidings, you know, are we just going to think about just doing sole source? I mean, there's a time factor involved always with contracts. And I just want to kind of a general answer whether we think that this is all doable. We're talking about close to $2 million and mostly, and also with the planning, the same, you know. I guess it's easier when we just do a, a, you know, an existing contract. We do some kind of, you know, work order, work order change or whatever. But, you know, are some of these new contracts that we, we're going to be entertaining? I'll stop now.
I can respond to that for our department. Pretty much where, there are a couple of factors. If there are any of these things, we would have to go out to bid. That would be one of the benefits of trying to get in front of the Planning Board early. That's one of the reasons we're trying to do this earlier as opposed to later so that if we do have to get bids. In the case of the items that, in fact, you'll see that the numbers that we're giving you are pretty detailed numbers. We actually have quotes for these items. A lot of the things like the equipment are things that we have contracts that we can ride. So we're able to go out and when I say contracts we can ride, it would be either a commission contract or a county or a state contract or some other local jurisdiction that we can ride. So we already have competitive pricing. So we're able to get quotes against those pricing and we're ready to pull the trigger on the funding for those. For things like the contracted services, we are actually using temporary services and we have a contract with a particular company for that. We're actually hoping for some of these temps that they may become employees. It's given us an opportunity to bring in some individuals to fill some immediate needs. And if their skill set is what we hope it is, at least looking at them on paper, that within a short time, when we advertise the positions, that the individuals will hopefully apply and that we'll be ready to hire them. And it does give us an opportunity for the, the temps in particular, if they, you know, if they work out well, it's a potential employee. If it doesn't work out, we're able to, you know, send them on their way and try and get another one. But we've had some good success so far in getting people to fill those slots.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Branson?
Yes, um, so I wanted to ask about the trash truck. But not specifically about the trash truck. I wanted to ask about the, the recycling program in the parks. Because I've, I've seen this, I've seen this request for the trash truck before, I think. This does not feel new to me. But, but the necessity for a, a new, new truck, you know, I understand that. I mean, especially with the pandemic, people are probably spending more time in the park. They create more waste, yada, yada. It's, it's a whole lifecycle thing. But, but I'm, I'm wondering about what, if any steps we're able to take regarding recycling, whether or not it's even possible. So if, if you could, you know, so that we're not creating as much trash or we're not, you know, having to haul away really as much trash. If, if there's anything you can say about that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Mike, do you want to handle that or do you want to?
Yeah, I, I don't know if any of the Park staff on here want to elaborate, but at a very high level, we do have a very robust sustainability program in the Parks Department. We have a dedicated position for a sustainability coordinator and one of the many things they look at is recycling. We traditionally have come on an annual basis to the Planning Board and given a report about efforts to reduce waste through things like composting. We have a huge program for our organic waste that we develop in the parks out at our Pope Farm Nursery where we compost at. But I will just say, without getting into the weeds for decades, we have made considerable efforts to try to increase the amount of recycling that occurs out in the parks. The human factor is always a problem when you have the recycle container next to the trash container and whether you can actually get people to differentiate. But I will just say, we would love, you know, we will, we will at some point, and I'll find this out soon, come to the Board and give a comprehensive report on waste reduction and recycling.
Right, thank you.
I'll just add a comment to that. They're actually working on the report right now. So I believe it will be in January. I know that we just provided some of the financial data and they're in the process of collecting the different information. So I believe it's January or February that they'll be presenting that report to the Planning Board.
All right, thank you. I mean, because you know, we're all, I mean, I don't, I don't think people really understand how much waste we as a society actually produce, you know. I mean, we're, you know, and, and any, anything that can be done to, you know, sort of decrease that and, you know, reuse, recycle, et cetera, you know, can, can be helpful. People don't, you know, people don't take into consideration, you know, we don't want our grandchildren buried in our trash, you know. Okay, that's, that's the recycle moment for today. Thank you very much.
All righty. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the transfers recommended by the, by the Parks Department.
I move that we approve the transfer recommended by the Parks Department.
I'll take a second. All right. Now that was clear. Thank you, everybody. One at a time. Very nice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No opposed, no abstained? The ayes have it. I thank you very much. Look, I wish everybody a safe, happy and and successful holiday season. Hopefully, everybody stays dry. But mostly, I hope they say stay, 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 stay safe. Boy, I'm having troubles today. But, but with, with that, unless there's somebody else, I think we're adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.